Attention nonprofits of Center County. CNET can help with your marketing needs. Twice a year, CNET offers PSA Days, a time when you can have an affordable, professional, public service announcement video produced to fit your 21st century advertising needs. Choose your level of involvement. We can come to shoot video at the location of your choice, or you can provide us with images and language and come sit in while we edit. If you're too busy saving the world, leave all the work to our professional staff and simply give us guidance, feedback, and approval of the finished product. Choose a package that fits your needs. CNET's low pricing includes script support, graphics, professional video production, editing, and airtime for up to one year with the option to continue or make a new video at the end of the term. We have an easy, affordable solution for your nonprofit organization. Contact us today for more information at 814-238-5031.
Are you looking for an affordable home located near school, work, and fun? Are you downsizing or leaving the area and looking to sell your home? Reach out to the State College Community Land Trust today. We have been buying, rehabbing, and selling permanently affordable homes in the State College borough since 1996. We keep land in trust and homes within reach always so that income-qualified individuals, families, and their pets can find their forever homes.
So you want to vote in Center County. To be eligible to vote in any election, you must be registered in the county 15 days or more before said election. You can check your registration status at vote.pA.gov. Click on Register to Vote, then Check Your Voter Registration. You can register online to vote at vote.pA.gov. Click on Register to Vote, then Select Register to Vote Online to complete and submit your registration online. Or if you want a registration form mailed to you, click on Register to Vote, then Register to Vote. You can also download the form straight to your computer, print it out, and mail it directly. If you are voting for the first time in a polling location, you will be required to show ID. You can verify authorized types of ID at vote.pA.gov. Click on Voting in PA, then First Time Voters. Additionally, if your address changes, you must update your registration. This could change the location where you go to vote. You can update your registration online as well at vote.pA.gov. Remember, if you want to vote in Center County, you must be registered in Center County for your ballot to count.
You're watching CNET, Center County's government and educational access network.
Let's call the Board of Commissioners a meeting to order at 10:01. Those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any public here for comment for items that do not appear on today's agenda? Seeing none, any additions to the agenda from the board? Probably a good thing. Today's probably going to be a long meeting. So if the meeting minutes are good, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meeting held November 4th.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting held on November 4th. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And we have Natalie Korman here with three resolutions regarding a very competitive state grant program.
Sure.
Natalie, why don't you take it away?
Sure. So I have resolutions for you today. The first two are specific to the local share count statewide grant application. So that funding is, as you know, the gambling funding that's available for counties that do not get direct allocation. That funding opportunity ends the end of November. And so it allows county governments or municipalities, et cetera, to apply whether you as the applicant or in partnership with a nonprofit agency. This is our third year of applying for LSA grants. And so we had some great partners come forward this year to do some applications. So I'm going to kick off and talk about two of them today with you. So the first one is the resolution to apply for the DCD local share count in partnership with Friends of Tallyrand. This is specific for the Sage at Tallyrand project. As we've all been educated on, Sage at Tallyrand, both in here and with the public, their hopes is to build the stage down at the park to allow it for some arts, cultural, and some performing arts opportunities at the park. They are working toward their fundraising goals, they're actually at about 80% of their goals. And so this $250,000 they are applying for will go toward the hope of their completion of their construction costs that they hope to start in mid to later 2026 for this project. So we will be looking at $250,000 in grant application for them.
Great. Well, we do appreciate that project, especially the cultural and tourism aspects of the project. And thankfully in this case, I don't believe there's any county match for these types of projects.
No, so LSA has no match requirements for it.
Oh, wow. Well, that's probably why it's so popular and oversubscribed.
Yes. That's why it's a well-applied grant.
All right. I believe we did win one last year, didn't we?
We won in 2023. The 2024 applications, I believe, actually are being reviewed and determined this week finally. And so we will find out whether we received any of the 2024 funding, hopefully very soon.
All right. Great. Commissioner Concepcion.
We had previously applied for Sage at Tallyrand in 2023.
Okay. Commissioner Concepcion, any comments on this one?
Yeah, no questions really. I think it's, you know, an interesting project, and they've done a good job of fundraising so far.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
No, it'd be interesting to see how we do. Thank you.
All right. Looks like we'll take a motion on this one then.
I will move to adopt Resolution 14 of 2025.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 14 of 2025. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And now the second one.
Sure. So the second one is with our partners with Center Care, as I know they are right over my left shoulder. And Center Care, we are applying for them for very different reasons. As you mentioned, the Sage Tallyrand is a tourism and art space. This is very much about supporting our communities, supporting our long-term care facility, and meeting those safety and kind of needs for them. They are applying for an application that totals $217,210. They're actually doing three kind of projects within that. They will be looking to purchase an ADA vehicle van primarily that will help safely do the transportation to the number of medical appointments that the residents have there. It's necessary for them to have that safe and secure transportation for them, so they'll be looking to purchase a vehicle for that. They will be looking to purchase equipment to do some enhanced snow removal for the facility with the number of residents, staff they have, plus the visitors that they get there, really kind of making sure that the grounds of the facility is well-maintained and well-cared-for. They will be looking to garner equipment for that. And then they're going to do some minor renovations to their flooring just to kind of make sure from a fall risk and durability, you know, kind of just really as those floors are used as well as they are, that they're just looking to do some minor renovations as part of this grant project as well for them. So again, no match for them to partner with us on this, but we are supporting this application for them.
Great. Well, thanks for covering the second one, Natalie. And obviously, Center Care is a great group that does wonderful work. It's actually one of the largest 501(c)(3)'s in Center County. And as Steve always likes to mention, they have the largest number of Medicaid beds for probably 50, 60, maybe even 70 miles in any direction. So super important for Center County and nowadays even a bit for the surrounding counties. So hopefully got a little bit of that in the application. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, it sounds like a good application. I think those sound like, you know, some important needs, and hopefully they'll be successful. This is a really crucial organization for caring for the aging in our community.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
I guess we have members of Center Care here. Is there anything that you would like to share?
Just again, thank you for the support as always. We'd like to partner with the Commissioners in the county and look forward to giving back to the community as well.
Yeah, I think it goes without saying that your mission is very, very special. It protects some of the most vulnerable folks in our community. So not only is this important, but the continual consideration of contributions from the community all year round really are important to the success of your mission. The nature of this grant, also because there's no match involved, it could be a...
Steve.
Sorry. Sit. There you go. The nature of this grant, because it is not a match involved, but also it covers a wide umbrella of things, we can utilize this one to cover some needs that we have that don't really fit into other departments within the Commonwealth grant system. So that's why we utilized what we asked for in this grant for that. So thanks for your consideration. We appreciate it. Hope you're successful. Thank you.
All right. So Center Care, Inc., the largest Medicaid and one of the larger Medicare facilities also in the entire central Pennsylvania region, looking to purchase a vehicle, some equipment, and doing some minor renovations to the facility. So Commissioners are very supportive. I think we could take a motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 15 of 2025.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 15 of 2025. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.
Okay.
All right. And now you've got a third one.
So yes, so this is a different grant. So this is for the Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund Library Grant. So this grant is specific for either counties or municipalities to apply on behalf of their local library. So we need to be the applicant and partner with our local library system. So we are doing a $750,000 grant application to the Keystone to expand and enhance the Center Hall library. So also over my left shoulder is, as you know, we have library folks here with us in the room. And this opportunity really is, it's taking the, how did I get this right, 2,915 square feet Center Hall library and expanding it to 5,365 square feet. It'll be adding multipurpose rooms. It'll enhance their technology area. It'll have some quiet area for residents and kids to come. It will also upgrade their HVAC system. This has really been a several-year project that the library has undertaken. It came out in a needs assessment in 2021 that this was necessary for Center Hall, and the library has really done the work. This is a 50/50 type of grant match opportunity, so $750,000 needs to be matched, if that, if not more, to do the project that they need to do. And so we are hopeful and confident with the work that the library has done for the application, that we are a good candidate for this. It really hits the needs of one of the rural parts of Center County. It's a well-loved and received library. It sits adjacent on property of the Pennsylie School District. So it's really partnerships across the board when you talk about a library in our community, and this Keystone Grant really highlights that for us. And so to partner with them, to do the resolution to allow us to apply for this grant.
Well, thanks Natalie. I know that, I remember, I think at least Commissioner Concepcion and I were at a kickoff meeting for that project recently. Do realize it's a well-used, and I'll use the phrase "much-loved" library there in one of the most beautiful valleys of Pennsylvania. And we're very much in support of the project because it serves youth, adults, and seniors, and obviously they're a bit cramped in the space at this point. Yes. Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, I thought the design that has been proposed for the new construction is really going to take that library to another level of, you know, being able to serve the community and accommodate, you know, larger numbers of patrons at a time and larger collections of books. You know, I think it's been really well thought out, so, you know, really hopeful this is successful. Yeah.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, three-quarter of a million dollars, that's a significant amount of money, and I hope you're successful because that'll go a long way to completing this project. So happy to support it.
This one is due...
In a few hours.
In seven days. I looked at the time because it's noon next Tuesday. That's why I looked at the time. It is due noon of next Tuesday. And so Denise is under crunch time, I will say that. But she's been great to work with, the board has been as well, just to get us everything that we need. This is a lengthy application process, but one that we are really excited and hopeful for.
Great. And we'd like to thank a substantial fraction of the board of the Center County Public Libraries here, and we're very happy to apply for the grant and assist you with all the paperwork.
Well, the board is very thankful for your support.
Well, you're welcome. Thanks again for coming. Unless there's anything else, I think we're eager to approve the resolution.
Yeah, so that it can be submitted on time. I'll move that we adopt Resolution 16 of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 16 of 2025. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And now we'll move to contracts and authorizations. So now Natalie has the contract, should we receive that Keystone Grant.
So per regulations of the grant, they like to have an MOU in place that does outline the responsibilities that we as the applicant will have, and then thus what the library will have in terms of the application process, if we are awarded the reporting and admin responsibilities that we have. And so both the board and ourselves have reviewed what an MOU would look like for us, and so that MOU is what we have before you today. It's very standard in terms of MOUs we've had before. Our solicitor has looked it over. The board has looked it over. It just outlines all of those regulatory responsibilities that we need, as well as administration, as well as the language that the grant likes to have in terms of the relationship that you have.
Great. Well, thanks again Natalie, and thanks for all your hard work on all these various grants. Obviously lots of paperwork, lots of forms, lots of data required. It's not easy, but thank you very much for spinning up a more generalized grant program within county government. Additional questions from the rest of the board on this one? All right.
I'll move to approve the MOU with Center County Library and Historical Museum.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the MOU with Center County Library and Historical Museum. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks Natalie. Appreciate it. And if you want, library board members could leave if you want to, because I know you're busy and we have probably another 45-ish minutes.
It's another deadline.
Yes.
Something like that.
I will.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you all.
Do we need to sign the MOU?
Double-check with Natalie. She's probably right around the corner. But yeah, if you're here, it might be easier.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Me, Hi, and Cindy and Jacob better strap in because we've got 45 more minutes of paperwork here. All right. So we will move on to capital projects. Looks like John will be covering this one.
Good morning Commissioners. Before you for considerations, the approval of a contract with GNR Excavating and Demolition, and this is for the removal of the old pavilion and storage buildings at the Community Services Building. This is in preparation for a future project where we plan to propose the addition of additional parking at the facility.
Great. Thanks, John. I know that additional parking is really going to be needed.
Yes.
Questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
No, it looks like a pretty reasonable cost for the amount of work being done.
Commissioner Dershowitz? All right.
I'll move to approve the contract with GNR Excavating and Demolition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with GNR Excavating and Demolition. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on. Looks like Krista has an item for risk management.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I'm here to ask for your approval on a contract renewal with City Clean Janitorial Services. We have really enjoyed working with them over the past two years, and they successfully clean our five MDJ offices. And we decided at this time to put a two-year contract together to secure the price and to also just establish some loyalty with them. So what I'm asking for in total is a contract in the amount of $52,440. And they will also offer some à la carte items, as well with, you know, cleaning carpets and windows and that kind of thing at our choice. So we're also including that amount to not exceed $13,350. That would absolutely be the maximum if they did every à la carte item we asked for them over the two years. So the contract total for both services is not to exceed $65,790, and this would run from January 1 of 2026 to December 31 of 2027.
Great. See, I want to stress, it's a two-year contract.
Two-year contract.
For five different locations.
Five offices.
On a weekly basis. So when you break it down, it's a very reasonable price.
It is, it is. And it's good quality service.
All right. Commissioner Concepcion?
Sounds okay.
Commissioner Dershowitz? All right.
I'll move to add the contract with City Clean Janitorial Services to the November 20th consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with City Clean Janitorial Services to the November 20th consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks Krista.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to human services, there's Kathy. We have a contract renewal with the Center for Community Resources.
Good morning. I'm here today to ask for a contract renewal with the Center for Community Resources. This particular contract is for their Community Mental Health Services Block Grant funding that provides peer services, peer residential services, mobile crisis, and crisis diversion. The grant, this is the last year for the grant through June 30th, and the remaining grant funds total $1,566,333. We don't know if we'll expend all of the grant dollars between now and June 30th, but those are the funds that are available for us to use between now and June 30th, 2026. I'm sorry, between July 1, expenditures that are eligible between July 1, 2025, through June 30 of 2026. We provide these crisis services to the extent that the funds are available. At that time, we will look to Medicaid, to neighboring counties, and the county funds, or I'm sorry, the state and federal funds that we are allocated to the extent that they are available.
All right. So it does sound like this is a maximum figure, and you're going to try to bring it down based on billing other groups, such as Medicaid and state and federal sources.
Exactly.
And we definitely appreciate the Center for Community Resources providing this broad variety of services. I know some larger counties have some of these services, including mobile crisis, but I believe we're one of the few medium-sized counties in the Commonwealth that offers this.
Yes, and the new crisis regulations have come out, and so we are working with the state to utilize those proposed regulations to enhance the programs that we are already providing to meet those new guidelines.
Great. Thanks Kathy. Commissioner Concepcion?
So this is federal funding that mayor may not continue after this year.
Correct, correct. Though the state is very earnest in the implementation of these new regulations to assure that we identify funding to meet the new guidelines.
Okay.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
I guess my question is, it's a million and a half dollars. If we're not, if this is over at the end of next, or the end of this fiscal year, state fiscal year, 1.5 million's a lot of money to try to gather up. What's the sustainability outlook on this?
Well, again, the state is committed to identifying funding to maintain these projects. Our intention is that we will continue to provide crisis services with the funds that are available to us. And so we will assure that individuals are safe, and we will do it with the services that we are able to provide. And so I can tell from the look on your face that yes, sustainability is a major concern. And so we are committed to providing crisis services and doing so under the law to the extent that we are able to and to provide the funding, with the funding that we are provided. And the state has also indicated that while we are mandated to provide crisis services, we do so to the extent that funds are available.
Okay. I'm just, what does your mental health budget look like under this new?
At this point, our contracts, we are able to meet the contracts with the funds that have been provided. We have an association meeting this week, and so we're hoping to get some clarification on exactly what the state budget is providing us. I have received two emails. One indicates flat funding, and one indicates that we are receiving an additional 20 million in funding as we have the last two state budgets. And so I'm kind of looking...
Rebeing the statewide.
Right, statewide 20 million. So I'm hoping to get some clarification as to which it is. It would be great because in the past two years, when an additional 20 million was added to the state budget for mental health services, Center County saw an additional $200,000 in mental health funding. That would be great. So we need to see which is which and which is accurate. We could certainly use the additional 200,000 in mental health funding to provide additional services and supports, but again, kind of need to see which is the accurate report.
Right. It just has always been a concern of mine when you rely on grant funding dollars to...
Exactly, exactly.
To sustain programs, but when they end, it ends up in the lap of taxpayers in a different way.
Right. And we're also identifying that a lot of the development that we do has to be done on a regional basis. We can't operate in silos anymore. So when we look at projects, it has to be, how do we do that in collaboration with other counties? And share expenses and operational costs.
And that's not a simple process.
No, it is not.
Okay. All right.
Especially when you're covering large geographical areas, it's, people need services close to where they are.
Right. And so when you build the services, you have to build in how does transport work? How do we get people? Walk-in is not really walk-in, it's more drive-in and drive-to. And then how do we get people to those resources? And support them in getting there and then getting home? And getting back to their local community resources where they will receive ongoing support.
We'll see.
Okay. We get creative.
Yes, well, someone's having a mental health crisis, they're not necessarily all that easy to transport, they probably shouldn't even be driving themselves.
And how do you do that safely?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, question?
Crisis funding programming primarily means mental health program funding?
For the most part. We certainly see, crisis is a different service for intellectual disabilities, it's a different service for drug and alcohol. And when you start to mix those diagnoses, it's an even different need. And so providing crisis service has to be individualized, and so the services that we develop has to be unique and meet the needs of the individual. And so the more of an array of crisis services that we can develop means that we have a better chance of meeting the individualized need. And so with these grants, we hope to develop services, again, that will provide an array of options so that we can get to a service that will meet the person's need. And again, we look more and more at regional options that we can access, that while it may not be here, we hopefully can get someone to a service that will meet their needs and will not create burdens for a service that is close but not quite the right fit.
Thank you. Thanks Gary. Any other questions for Kathy? No? We could take a motion?
I'll move to add the contract for Center for Community Resources to the November 20th consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Center for Community Resources to the November 20th consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks Kathy.
Thank you.
And while Center County has been fronting money for a broad variety of human services to 42,000 served individuals in Center County, we're doing another check run here before the state money finally starts showing up.
Right, exactly. The check that I'd like to recognize today on the check run is to Center Communications. We're continuing to invest in the inf...
Communications. We're continuing to invest in the infrastructure of our nine-one-one response system. And with that, I would move that we approve the check run dated November fourteenth.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated November fourteenth. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to authorities, boards, and commissions. We have two reappointments to the Conservation Board of Directors, Ginger Bion and Robert Shannon, and their terms will be January first of two thousand twenty-six to December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-nine. They're also appointing Commissioner Dersham to the board for January first of twenty-six to December thirty-first of twenty-six. And I think we've established that since there are other people on the list, Steve, you can vote for yourself.
All right, okay.
All right. And moving along, we have, well, you don't usually want to vote for yourself.
That's all right. I will vote, I will vote to serve one more year on the conservation.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Moving on, we have two additional appointments. We have Brian Rutter to the Hospital Authority from November eighteenth of twenty-five to January thirty-first of twenty-seven, and Nathaniel Rasmussen to the Housing Authority, and his appointment will be November eighteenth of twenty-five to November seventeenth of two thousand twenty-nine. So I think with the exception of the first two for the Conservation Board, everybody has a different term. Any, any questions from the board on the ABC appointments and reappointments?
Just thank you to the people in the community who are willing to serve on these boards and authorities.
Definitely.
Yeah, Rob Shannon is the, is the chair of the Conservation District Board and has been for a while now, and does a great job, so.
Wonderful.
Okay. I'll move then to approve the ABC reappointments and appointments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ABC reappointments and appointments. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And now we have our staff recommendations for the liquid fuels, fee for local use, and I even think there's some Act eighteen in there somewhere. And why don't you come to the side table here. We have Richa and Cochi, and this is sort of the binder where you received all the documents from. So I'm hoping we're getting a summary.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good.
Your lottery better pack of lunch.
Yeah.
Okay. So greetings, everyone. We are here today to present the staff recommendation for the county's two thousand twenty-six liquid fuel program transportation. So this is the program overview. The liquid fuel program follows a set process each year. First, the county commissioners authorize the program to begin. Then all municipalities are notified that they can submit project request. After the submission deadline, Penn Dot and county staff review all the applications, and we are currently in a stage indicated by the red, where staff prepare and present recommendation to the commissioners. And the final step will be the commissioners to review this recommendation and make decision. So let's start with the county funding sources. So local transportation funding sources. Center County relies on three primary local funding sources to support transportation infrastructure. They are liquid fuel, Act thirteen, and fee for local use program. Each source is authorized under Pennsylvania law and contributes to maintaining road, bridges, and other transportation facilities. Liquid fuels is authorized under the Liquid Fuel Tax Act of nineteen thirty-one, Act thirteen, at-risk bridge program established under Act thirteen of two thousand twelve, and these funds are dedicated specifically to bridge projects. And fee for local use that is authorized under Act eighty-nine of two thousand thirteen, and Center County passed the dollar five fee for local use ordinance in May twenty seventeen and renewed it in February two thousand twenty-two. So for this year, for the two thousand twenty-six liquid fuel program, the county anticipates the following amounts available to support municipal projects: two hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents from county liquid fuels. This total includes the projected December two thousand twenty-five and June two thousand twenty-six allocations to county. One million seven hundred ninety-one thousand and seven hundred one dollars and fifty-eight cents from county fee for local use funds. This amount includes the expected December two thousand twenty-five projection. And three hundred twenty-five thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents from Act thirteen fund. So this is kind of summary of what we received, what can, how many applications we received for the two thousand twenty-six liquid fuel program. On the left, the summary highlights the overall participation, where twenty-three applications received from twenty-three municipalities, eighteen township, and five boroughs. A total of approximately one-point-three-eight million dollars in funding was requested to complete projects totaling approximately three-point-one-five million dollars. This is the project, project request map. This map illustrates the distribution of project funding requests across the county municipalities. Each municipality is outlined, and the blue circles indicate the amount requested, with larger circles representing higher dollar values. As we look across the map, we can see that some townships, such as those in central and eastern parts of our county, submitted larger requests, shown by bigger circles. Other areas submitted smaller or moderate requests, while a few municipalities did not submit any requests at all. The legend on the right shows the range of requests from ten thousand dollars to one-hundred sixty, one-hundred sixty thousand dollars. This allows us to compare requests across municipalities at a glance. So moving on to next slide. From those requested amount, we evaluated the project, and projects were evaluated using several key criteria. First, project type, like pavement, drainage, safety, bridge work, road maintenance, et cetera. We tried to include variety of projects. And second, municipal contribution, the level of local funding support, level of need, the projects addressing safety or critical infrastructure. We also reviewed previous allocation to ensure fair distribution over time. And municipal revenue and road mileage was also taken into consideration to understand financial capacity and scope of responsibility. The examples shows, examples shown illustrate the types of project being proposed. For example, pavement repairs, drainage upgrades, safety improvements, ADA compliance, and bridge rehabilitation. These are few examples of the projects. Other recommended projects also include equipment, guide rails, and other type of road maintenance. These projects highlight the variety and scale of transportation infrastructure need in our communities. So staff recommendation. After reviewing project request, staff recommend funding five projects across five municipalities from liquid fuel funds. First is Banner Township for guideline installation and drainage stabilization on Bion's Lane. Recommended amount is fifty-five thousand dollars. Second is Burnside Township for new truck with blow and broom. Recommended amount is sixty thousand dollars. Taylor Township grading and widening of zero-point-one pile mile of Tuskovis Lane. Recommended amount is thirteen thousand eight-hundred dollars. And fourth is Union Township for paving final section of T three ninety-eight Isid Hollow Road. Recommended amount is fifty thousand dollars. And five Worth Township, face to improvement to West Sawmill Road. Recommended amount is thirty-five thousand dollars. And two thousand twenty-six Act thirteen recommendation, there is only one project for two thousand twenty-six Act thirteen recommendation, that is for Walker Township, which is rehabilitation of Blue Ball Road Timber Deck Bridge, and the recommended amount is forty-five thousand. Next, a total of seven projects recommended from fee for local use funds. First is the Curtain Township is recommended to receive dollar ninety-three thousand for maintenance work on Summit Hill Road. Second is Center Hall Borough, which is recommended for fifteen thousand dollars to support paving on West Locust and North Hofer Street. Third is Liberty Township for finishing the paving on T four eighty-eight, and we recommend one hundred forty-one thousand and two hundred ninety dollars. Miles Township is recommended for one hundred fifty thousand dollars to widen and repave over six thousand feet of Simmerton Road. And Miles Per Borough is recommended for fifteen thousand for quick street repairs. And then Milheim Borough is recommended for dollar seventy-four thousand one hundred and seventy-five for safety, ADA, and drainage upgrades. And finally, the Patton Township is recommended for dollar fifty thousand towards improvement on East Hillside Avenue, including ADA compliance. So this is the overview of recommended project. The map highlights the municipalities recommended to receive funding for the two thousand twenty-six liquid fuel program. Each star represents a project location, and size of star corresponds to the recommended funding range. Smaller stars indicated projects recommended under thirty thousand. Medium-sized star represent projects in thirty thousand to sixty thousand range, and larger stars show project recommended for sixty thousand to ninety thousand, ninety thousand to one-twenty, and one-twenty thousand to one-hundred fifty thousand. The spread shows funding is balanced geographically, supporting a variety of transportation and infrastructure needs in both rural and populated areas. And this slide summarizes the total recommended allocations for two thousand twenty-six across all funding programs we reviewed. So for the fee, for the liquid fuel program, the total recommended allocation is dollar two hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred, supporting road improvement, drainage work improvement, and equipment upgrade and paving project. For the fee for local use program, five hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars. This, this allocation is to support roadway, safety, and infrastructure projects submitted by municipalities throughout the county. And for the Act thirteen funding, we are recommending dollar forty-five thousand, which will support bridge rehabilitation work in Walker Township. So altogether, these recommendation totals seven hundred ninety-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars for two thousand twenty-six. Okay, that's all I have.
Great. Well, thanks, Richa and Cochi, for summarizing all of this information. The commissioners have tried to make it easier for the municipalities by having just one series of applications at one time of the year, rather than making all the municipalities fill out the paperwork three different times. So appreciate your, your help with streamlining that. We would definitely encourage municipalities to put funding requests in for next year because it looks like we'll also have a decent pot of money then. And we do appreciate the state support for this funding. Board of Commissioners long ago was given the option of either continuing to own roads and bridges in Center County and continue to receive a large liquid fuels application, or to just get out of that business entirely. And I think they made a very good decision to get out of that business entirely a number of decades ago. Because when we go to the Commissioners' Convention, we hear a lot of bellyaching about the costs of roads and bridges. And we, we understand that the local municipalities' budgets are stretched, and so we're happy to, to assist. And especially for places like Belphant Borough, where a prior award was almost a half a million dollars to replace a bridge that was going to cost close to a million. And it was the only way in and out of the neighborhood, so it needed to be done. Commissioner Concepcion, comments or questions?
Yeah, so as you're evaluating these projects, I think you had shared your criteria, and those criteria make a lot of sense. And so the other question I have is, the ones that you're recommending, we're sure that the municipalities have the matching funds that they would be able to actually carry out the project in this, in the timeframe that we're expecting.
So the project, the projects we ask for, in the application, we ask for a start date, an anticipation start, and completion date. That's one of the things that we do consider because we look at a five-year limitation on the projects. Like, we understand that there are things that happen within municipalities that, that may defer or put those projects back. But we, we ask for a five, minimum of five-year. So in this case, yes, we evaluated that, and the vast majority of these projects will be completed within twenty-six.
Okay.
Potentially the beginning of twenty-seven.
Good.
Yes, that's one of the, we do ask. I'm sure.
Okay.
Great question. Anything else?
We did, we did go back to some of the municipalities because it was, it was very competitive this year on a lot of the projects. And we wanted to ask if some of the municipalities could put additional funding in to kind of make their share as much as some of the others, even though their budgets are slightly. So we did go back and question some of, some of the municipalities to make sure that everyone was looking at that. And I do want to stress to the commissioners, because this is kind of my opportunity, to say thank you for the fee for local use project, because we'll be coming to you in December with the completion of the bridge replacement fund. We've taken a conservative approach the last two years with the fee for local use funding because of those bridge bundles. They are complete.
Oh, good.
So we have taken the extra monies that we had set aside, and we're actually pushing out a lot more to the municipalities this year because we have that, that conservative approach actually has allowed us to provide additional funding for this year. So we'll be bringing the final report and request for signature next month for that.
Cochi, I think this particular bridge bundle was the one where we received the additional two million from the state?
Yeah, it was two million seventy thousand dollars, and projects came in. It was well over four million dollars for two bridges, and they were total replacement projects. And we've been at all summer getting these finalized, and we're just down to getting the final paperwork complete now. So there's a few more invoices, but we're, we feel confident that we can fund a lot of these projects with that additional money that we had set aside to use for the bridge bundles.
Well, we definitely appreciate the state funding. We also appreciate the contractors coming in with relatively reasonable bids and completing the, the work on time.
Absolutely.
Yes. Commissioner Dersham, sorry.
But in one of your previous slides, you indicated there was one-point-eight, approximately one-point-eight million dollars in the fee for local use fund. Is that, is that the balance now, or is that how much has been collected? What, what, just what numbers that represent?
Okay, this is the available balance for us, but it includes the projection for December two thousand twenty-five, which is around three hundred thousand dollars. This is available after eliminating all the liabilities and set aside funds for bridge project. This is the amount we have available now in our county fund.
You have, you have one-point-eight million available now?
Yes.
And then you want to, you want, you're indicating you want to put a, what, another five-hundred-some-thousand into the-
Yes, five hundred thirty-eight thousand.
So to bring the balance down to one-point-three million, or thereabout?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Part of that balance recommendation on that screen, Steve, is the allocation anticipated to come in December, so we're looking at that allocation.
End of year.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's still a little bit of a flux number there, but going forward in two thousand twenty-six, we should have additional funding here available to add even more projects. And we would certainly encourage the municipalities to look at everything that they can, because this year we're actually doing equipment. We're finishing up some road projects that had to be done in phases. We're doing a bridge project, and we certainly encourage the municipalities to look at their, their bridges, because now that we're done with the bridge bundles, we have the capability to help assist them with moving forward on those as well, too. So we're opening up a lot going in two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven to be able to do additional projects funding.
Yeah, I'm just doing some quick math. One-point-eight million dollars divided by five is three hundred and sixty thousand vehicles and trailers that have been taxed. Doing some math.
Yeah.
Well, it's over a couple of years, I think.
Yeah.
The number's the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the fee for local use will need to be looked at in twenty, twenty-seven. Again, I believe it's looked at. So we'll look at that again in the next coming years. So we'll look at that again in the next coming years.
All right, thank you.
I do know for municipalities, even refurbishing a small bridge is a couple hundred thousand dollars now. And, you know, for a larger borough or municipality, they can probably find that money. For a smaller borough or less populous township, they don't, they don't have that kind of money. So they're really relying on a combination of the Act 13 Fee for Local Use and the Liquid Fuels.
Yeah, the Taylor Township Bridge, which you guys were generous to, to help support last year, was almost $300,000 in itself, and it was, it was just an open-grade bridge.
Yeah.
Very basic bridge, so $300,000 to a community that has very small funding balances. This is very beneficial funding sources for.
Just if you, if you do the math, there is an offset, though, because the $300,000 that went to Taylor Township, if you divide that by five, that's a heck of a lot more than the vehicles that I've ever been in. So the rest of the county is subsidized in Taylor Township. Just, just to be clear where this money comes from, so.
It's the $5 registration fee on your vehicles, yeah.
Yeah, and I just want to say that when you register one of the small vehicle, or small trailers in Center County, it's $6, and then you add a $5 fee on it, it makes it $11, which is almost, well, it's about an 80% tax on your registration. Just to keep this real.
Well, that's sort of, that's sort of information that we need to share.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Questions from the press on the three different funding programs?
Is the Fee for Local Use set by the state, or is it like an internal surcharge where you have arranged it?
No, it's set by the state. It's $5. That's the maximum.
You can't change or raise for?
We can't raise it for inflation or anything. So over time, the impact of that funding will slowly reduce. But obviously, especially since we were able to combine that with an extra $2,700,000 towards two very large bridges that were millions of dollars each, it ended up being very advantageous for the county. And of course, this also pulls down additional state funding as well, occasionally even federal funding. So it does create jobs within Center County, in addition to improving the roads and the safety of the bridges. Good question. Any, anything else from the rest of the press? All right. Unless we've got any other questions, I believe this was more of a presentation than an actual final vote.
We will be back December 18th to request final approval. We love, there's time to review the information and go back and ask approval this December 18th.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks. And now we'll have Chad coming up regarding our 225th anniversary, regarding the judiciary system, which is, as a group, a major part of county government. And obviously, if you're involved in that system, it's incredibly important to you.
Yes, thank you. So continuing our history series, like Mr. Higgins said, with our county court and operations. So we'll start with the court, kind of go through a little bit of the history of our courthouse, which is our oldest county operating building. So the first court in Center County was held in a quarter session in November of 1800, before Associate Judges James Potter and John Barber. The first grand jury was assembled in April of 1801. From 1800 to 1806, court sessions were held in the parlor of Jane Dunleavy's house at the northeast corner of High Street and Spring Street. This property is still standing today. It's 143 West High Street, Cool Beans, the coffee shop. That's the building that our original court proceedings were held.
The jail was in the basement?
Yes.
Which is Cool Beans.
Yes. Yep. After five years of utilizing the space, the decision was made to construct a courthouse on High Street's current location. That courthouse consisted of two floors, which housed offices on the first floor and a grand courtroom on the second floor. Construction was completed in 1805, and judicial operations were moved from the stone house in 1806. After several years of conducting county business, the need arise for additional space. And so in 1811, two wings were added to the north and south side of the courthouse. The structure remained a simple two-story rectangular structure until eight-column porch was added at the front entrance in 1835. In 1855, following years of disrepair, the decision was made to eliminate and rebuild the building, leaving the columns in place. So as a result of this new construction, the courthouse was enlarged. The coppola and the clock were added at the top of the building, and a four-foot copper fish weather vane, which was originally placed on the 1805 courthouse, what is added at the top. In 1906, the Soldiers and Sailors Memorial and Andrew Curtin statue were dedicated. There are approximately 3,800 names on 20 bronze panels honoring Center County veterans from the American Revolutionary War, War of 1812, Mexican-American War, Civil War, Spanish-American War, and Philippine-American War. In 1909, the building was enlarged again with an addition at the rear of the courthouse. At the time, there was no basement under the original courthouse, so one was dug during the addition. And as part of the work, the interior of the courthouse was remodeled, new stairways built, and marble was added throughout the building. There was another modern addition to the east side of the courthouse in 1964. And as a result of the construction completed in 1964, the building that was constructed in 1855 really remained untouched, and as it is today with many of the original design elements. The grand courtroom on the second floor of the courthouse contains the original judge's bench, as well as the designated seating for the jurors. The walls of the courtroom contain original portraits of many judges who have served in Center County. Center County Courthouse is the oldest courthouse in Pennsylvania that continues to conduct daily judicial operations. And in 1976, it was added to the National Register of Historical Places. Today, the courthouse houses three judicial chambers, three courtrooms, two jury rooms, court administration offices, pro bono jury commissioners, and probation and parole. It is estimated that approximately 25,000 to 30,000 people conduct business or attend court proceedings in that building every year. Currently, the 49th Judicial District comprises the geographical boundaries of Center County, contains the Court of Common Pleas, four judges, and six district judges. The Court Administration Office is the administrative arm of the court and is responsible for all support functions necessary to maintain the efficient and effective operation of both the common pleas and the minor judiciary. Responsibilities of that office include, but are not limited to, jury usage, budget, fiscal, personnel, planning, data processing, case flow management, and public information. The Court Administration Office also administers and supervises the county's probation and parole department and domestic relations service. There's about 80 employees that comprise the court operations, domestic relations, probation, and district courts. Moving on to our next office is the Office of the Probonotary. So this dates back to the founding of the county, when in 1800, Richard Miles was elected the first pro bonotary of Center County. Since then, 30 individuals have served in that office, with our current pro bonotary, Jeremy Breyon, serving since 2020. This office is the permanent record-keeping office for the Court of Common Pleas of Center County. Both civil and criminal transactions are filed, docketed, and maintained in this office, as well as judgments, divorce actions, and numerous miscellaneous type of filings. Probonotary's office is responsible for the collection of bail money and its return of the surety upon completion of the court auction. There's approximately 6,000 civil cases, and 2,500 criminal cases are recorded and maintained yearly in that office. And in addition to providing information to county offices, they process approximately 1,000 passport applications each year as well.
And they give great service.
Yes, they do.
Yes.
And though also individuals wishing to become United States citizens are naturalized through this office. Naturalization ceremonies include the induction of approximately 30 new citizens in Center County each year, and the office operates with about 12 staff members. Our county probation and parole department is the arm of the Center County Court of Common Pleas and provides both adult and juvenile probation and parole services to the court. The earliest mentions I was able to find of a probation department was in our 1944 institutional district meetings. So this department has been around for a significant period of time within the county. In addition to supervising sentenced offenders, the department prepares pre-sentence investigations for adult offenders, social case histories for juvenile offenders. Probation and parole department is also charged with the responsibility to collect court-ordered fines, cost fees, and restitutions. The department has a number of programs in place, such as school-based juvenile probation officers, intermediate punishment programs and evaluation, coordination of community services as ordered by the court, coordination and administration of DUI court, adult drug court, and behavioral health court. They have specialized probation and a prison program coordinator that acts as a liaison between the court and the county correctional facility. And this office operates with about 25 employees. Moving on to our domestic relations department, this is a court-appointed office under the Court of Common Pleas, and it serves as the court's child support enforcement, support enforcement agency. The DRS prepares petitions for both child and spousal support, establishes support and enforces support orders, establishes paternity for children born out of wedlock, and locates absent parents. Servicer is available for anyone who has custody of child with an absent parent or any party seeking spousal support. And the earliest mentions I was able to find in our records of domestic relations was in 1950 county budget had a line item for a domestic relation department, and this department has about 14 staff members. And then our last office to talk about related to court is the District Attorney's Office. In 1850, Pennsylvania legislature passed a law allowing each county to elect a district attorney. James Rankin was the first individual to hold the office in Center County. Prior to 1850, the state attorney general and their deputies were responsible for investigating and prosecuting crimes within the county. District Attorney is the chief law enforcement officer for the county. The office prosecutes all misdemeanor and felony cases before the Court of Common Pleas. The Office of the District Attorney provides assistance to municipal and state police officers' investigations, help them with criminal conduct, and frequently works with many agencies throughout the county. The office currently has about 24 employees and is led by Bernie Cantorna, who has served as a Center County District Attorney since 2018. So that concludes what I have for our court operations.
Great, well, thanks for covering that, Chad. And I think I just heard you say that the oldest operating courthouse in the state serves something like 25,000 to 30,000 people a year?
Yes, that's the numbers that Kendra, Court Administrator, yeah.
Way more than I thought it was going to be.
Yes.
Wow, very busy. Commissioner Concepcion, any comments or questions?
No, this was really interesting. It's quite a point of pride to have the oldest operating courthouse in the state.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Copper Fish?
Yes.
When, when, I was not clear as to what, did it, was it original to the courthouse and then transferred when it was remodeled?
Yes, it was.
Or was it replaced when it was remodeled? How old was that fish?
Yes, it was original to the courthouse that was built in 1805.
Okay.
And then it was moved to the top of the courthouse, I believe, in 1835.
So it is the original 1805 fish that's on top?
That's our understanding, yes. It's the original fish.
Good to know, good to know.
Wow, that is one old fish.
Yeah, we'll have to show it some more respect when we go by. It's on all, it's on all the, sort of the paperwork and everything.
Yeah.
It's on the logo, there's a certain shirt.
Yeah, there you go. So, there you go, now I know.
Boy, that thing's almost as old as a Greenland shark.
Yeah.
And of course. Yeah. If anybody gets any ideas, there are cameras everywhere at the courthouse, so. Don't be trying to put a Volkswagen up there or anything.
I think that would be a challenge.
Yes.
No, that was, that was a great presentation.
Excellent.
Yeah, thanks. Any, any questions from the press? Now that we know that the, the fish itself is 220 years old?
Yes.
Wow. There's a human interest story for you, Jacob.
Is there, is there any, is there any remnants of the, of the old jail in Cool Beans Coffee Shop, though?
Not to my knowledge, there's not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, that was, that was wonderful and enlightening. Thank you very much, Chad.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. All right, moving on to our administrators' report. John, I think you've got meetings scheduled.
Yes, as we do every year around this time, we come to you for approval of the coming year's meeting schedule for the various boards and commissions that, meetings that we have, we're obligated to provide public announcement on. All meetings are held in Room 146 here in Willabang Office Building, unless otherwise noted in the schedule. One thing of particular note is that the Board of Elections meetings are going to be held at the new CSB building. And those are, we have set dates during the week, and then we can, you know, provide notice if they're, if they're actually needed. There's also the public meeting option for attending virtually, which is in accordance with, with regulations. So if you were so inclined, we would need you to approve the 2026 county meeting schedule.
Great, well, I'm pretty sure we need to be inclined to do that.
Well, if there were changes.
Yeah, advertise it in the newspaper.
Yep.
Any questions or suggested changes to the 2026 county meeting schedule?
No, it's fine.
All right.
I'll move to approve the 2026 county meeting schedule.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2026 county meeting schedule. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, John. Moving on to reports and announcements, I believe we're, we don't have a voter registration report. All right, moving on to the rest of the announcements. The Board of Commissioners' meeting on Tuesday, November 25th, has been canceled to allow the board to attend the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Fall Conference. And Center County Government Offices will be closed on Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Are there any executive sessions to reporter hold, John?
No executive sessions to reporter hold.
All right. Moving on to our public meeting schedule, we'll be holding, I believe, the certification for the most recent election, which had a record overall turnout and a highest percentage turnout in multiple decades, at 3 o'clock today at the Community Services Building Cafe. Thursday is a busy day on November 20th, Finance Committee at 9:00, Combined Salary Board and Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00, and yet another budget work session at 2 o'clock. On Tuesday, December 2nd, Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00, and the Employee Benefit Trust meeting at 3 o'clock. Any questions from the press?
Just looking for your reaction to the state budget.
Well, after four and a half months, we are pleased to have a state budget. Obviously, it's about another two weeks or so till the money actually starts showing up to the school districts, the counties, the human service agencies, et cetera. So for us, it's not quite over yet. We, as a group Commonwealth-wide, the commissioners had asked for additional funding for a broad variety of areas, including mental health, sort of what the governor gave with one hand of a $20 million increase for the third year in a row. May or may not have been taken away with a $17 million cut to the mental health budget in the state, but we don't know if that $17 million cut is to county funding or internal funding within the state of, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So we do appreciate the budget, finally, being passed, last one in the nation. But it, it was pretty rough on the counties, the human service agencies, and the school districts. So we hope they don't do this again.
And just to clarify, the county's never had to take out loans, never cut any services?
Center, Center County has been managed rather pessimistically from a cash flow standpoint for several decades now. Although we were reaching the point where we were having weekly cash flow meetings, just to make sure we could make it December 31st.
Thank you.
Does he have any questions?
I got questions.
The three funding issues now, is that county funding for Cali Ran and Center Care?
There, those particular grants are incredibly competitive, so we definitely appreciate state legislative support on those. But no, there's no local match required for local share accounts for the gambling money statewide. There is a 50-50 match for the request for the library, but we believe the library and local fundraising and other grants that might be matchable to that grant will provide. local fundraising and other grants that might be matchable to that grant will provide, hopefully, the, the local funding for the one-to-one match for that grant.
I ask because I think the last time you did Center Care funding, you said you had no more county money for that facility.
Correct. So in this case, there is no more county money for that. That would be 100% state funding.
Any plans in the future for more renovation work at the courthouse, adding courtrooms, anything like that?
We hope to not have to add any additional courtrooms. We have spent, oh my gosh, definitely in Commissioner Dershowitz's timeframe, tens of millions of dollars keeping up the courthouse to its beautiful, current beautiful state. It is one heck of a beautiful money pit. All right, thanks. Any other questions? No? All right. If, if we're good, I think we take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at 11:20, 11:09. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries.
The Center Region Active Adult Center is a vibrant, inclusive, and happening location designed for active adults 55 years and over to be social and participate in new experiences while also staying close to home. We promote healthy aging through our many activities and health forums, as well as lifelong learning through classes and social interaction that suit almost any lifestyle. Whether you prefer line dancing followed by a walk, or a game of bridge and a meal, the center is sure to have something for you. Visit crpr.org for more info.
Did you know that CNET has over 30 years of program archives available to the public? For a requested donation of $20, you can receive a DVD or digital copy of any program in our library going back to 1988. The CNET archives include high school graduations and award nights, school district concerts and sporting events, school library write and illustrate your own book awards, Memorial Day in Wolfsburg, and the Central Pennsylvania Festival of the Arts, military history lectures, silverware roundtables, and many more. And don't forget about the meetings. We have an expansive archive of local government, as well as Belfont and State College area school board meetings. CNET has been covering the Center County community for over three decades, and we have the tape to prove it. Visit cnet1.org to browse our archives, and you can call or email us to order your own DVD or digital copy today. Nothing good on TV? You're just not watching the right channels.